Well, we're just set up for replicatory. I just got to take more. Prickers everything else.
The last. I went there and the mom was back sitting here and running. Yeah, the guy or the other one came up too. So so wasn't it get down here? That's what it is.
Oh, I never.
Someone like you. They're basically.
One second. Come on.
The way you're.
And I'll get now that I'm.
Yeah, and I know. I love my, uh. My mental. He really says.
Um, I just said.
Yeah, my.
Wow. And I've been.
Yeah.
I. Three. And. It's. They're just out. You got this. Now they have. Oops, sorry. I guess that does what. Does what. All right.
It might be.
On on just on.
It's easier if you.
So. Yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty.
Jesus. So good. I like. Yes. Twelve to seven on Tuesday. Four to seven. Can I kick around till I come back here? Come back.
Okay, good.
Well, they're just here. We can see that from the city. But yeah. No, I don't.
Yeah. No. Every month they get. At least once. Usually when they want. Something, yeah, he does have a routine either. It's a good.
Yeah. Wasn't it? I was rushing.
Show them they come back. Some of them are very hard. And. And. Why don't we? You're in profit. And but whether. When I called. She said that you were not.
What are you talking about?
I don't. I'm. Yeah. I mean, I try. I want to. Yeah. Please. Please. Carol. She's.
Three.
Mountain. That's. Okay. Sure. Most of the. They are. And. Why is your. Always.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order for March twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three. If you could please arise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Councilmember Nunez, would you like to lead us?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you could please remain standing, we have Pastor Anthony Martinez from Cross Connection Church. Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Let's bow our heads in prayer. God, we pray that this meeting would be in the best interest of everyone involved. We pray that you would give us the courage to speak if we have reason, for the decisions we make can have monumental impacts. So we ask for your wisdom. Open up our minds to your ways, God, and open our ears to hear each other with a receptive heart. Help us make fair assessments of what they say and help us to treat everyone who is present with dignity and respect. We want to be godly in our actions with one another, being slow to speak and quick to listen, and valuing the opinions of others. So with regards to this, we pray for your help and for your love. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. And you can be seated, please. Mr. Scallik, can you please call the roll?
Yep. Councilmember Musgrove, present. Councilmember Nunez.
Present.
Councilmember Sannella.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here.
Okay, if the council could please join me in front, we have a proclamation this evening. One of the best parts of our job is to recognize our volunteers. And in San Marcos, we have the spirit of service that we'd like to talk about. And it's a way that many people just come together and serve our community in all different ways. And we really appreciate that. So today, we have Bert Ton. And if you come on down, Bert, twenty years you have been serving our city. That is awesome. Give me a hand. You can come on down and stand by me. I'm going to read this to you. We have a certificate of recognition with an honorable certificate right over here, if you don't mind, for dedicating twenty years to the Parks and Trails Reserve Ranger Program. Retiring after thirty-seven years at Halandia Dairy, you committed to ensuring the safety of park and trail visitors, observing and reporting concerns, and promoting responsible use and resource preservation six days, six days a week?
Six days a week.
Wow, that is so wonderful. Wait, rain or shine?
Even though I don't live here anymore, I live in Escondido. I travel every morning.
Oh, my gosh.
By car to the trails or parks of San Marcos.
That is wonderful. I love that.
Just in my blood, because I lived here over fifty years. You know.
That is.
So San Marcos is my city.
That is amazing.
And whatever I can do to beautify the city.
Well, I need to just give you the microphone. You're just. You have a lot more to say than I do. So 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 go on. What else were you saying? Anything?
Well, I like to do this as long as I possibly can, you know, even though it's getting a little harder now.
Yeah.
Since I'm advanced in age, but.
You are? Six days a week, I don't know.
As long as the Lord gives me the strength, I'll continue to do it.
Yes, well, thank you very much. We really appreciate you. So we're going to give this to you, and then we'd like to take a picture with you, if that'd be okay.
Sure.
We really, we really do appreciate you. Do you have anything else you'd like to say this evening?
No, that's about all.
Okay, well, that's wonderful. All right. So if you could come on over here and we're going to take a quick picture.
Thank you. Congratulations. Want to get in the middle?
If I need, rematch, actually.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
I was called, but I don't play. I know it's too hard for me.
Can be frustrating.
I'd rather hike the trails.
Good for you. Well, thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you. Thank you for everything you've served us. Yes. Really appreciate you, Bert. Thank you. Thank you again, Bert. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Do, are there any items that any council members wish to pull?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion.
Madam Mayor, I think you have one comment for one.
Okay.
For item number.
Um, did you give that to me?
Number nine.
A speaker slip?
Thought I did.
Sorry, I don't see it. Shucks. Oh. Thank you. Hmm. Just kidding. Okay, okay, so item number nine. So the motion of, the maker of the motion, are you okay with approving everything except for item number nine?
Absolutely.
Okay, and second?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to item number nine. We have LeAnn Porman, Palomar Estates, East Estates Rent Review. Okay, so hello, how are you this evening? Oh, sorry, I forgot to push that back the other way.
If I could hold on.
Councilmembers.
Excuse me for a second.
Okay.
I think we might have just made a mistake.
What?
I think we assumed that her, when it was rent review, it was about item number nine. But if it's about Palomar Estates, then that would be an oral communications item, not a consent calendar item. That's our, that's our fault.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, sorry, I'll, I'll bring you back up for just one second, okay? So I would make a motion to approve number, number, item number nine.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mrs. Porman, sorry. Now you can come back up for oral communications. I just had to, I just had to make sure we're procedurally doing everything okay.
Gotcha.
By the book. Thank you.
Hi, councilmembers. And Rebecca Jones, our mayor. I'm LeAnn Porman. I live at Palomar Estates East. A couple of months ago, seven of us residents signed petitions against rent increase of thirty-five dollars. Last year it was sixteen, previous years, six to eight dollars. Of the one to two percent, we were told would only increase when we moved into Palomar East Estates. Twenty years ago, I sat in Melba Bishop's living room. She advised us to reinstate rent control in Oceanside. She had lobbied for that year's previous. I was the first president with Frank Merrifield and others on the board. We went door to door to get property owners to vote for rent control, and it was voted in. Some park owners tried to raise rents by a thousand dollars a month. City council did not let that happen. I'm asking for a rent review to do a diligent job and refuse Millennium Housing this increase to start April first. We have several seniors like myself on social security, some only have seven hundred dollars a month social security. This is unfair at Palomar Estates East. Millennium will get thirteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars a month with this increase, rent increase. At sixteen dollars, like last year, he received five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. In a city with so many homeless, let's not have this happen to your seniors. This is a C five, oh, one, three, C nonprofit park. Thank you, LeAnn Porman.
Thank you very much. Have we been in touch with her or? If you could be sure to leave your information before you leave, and staff will reach out to you. It's not an agendized item, so we will, I have to get back to you. We can't discuss it during the meeting. All right, thank you very much. Okay, moving, oh, one more oral communications. We have Tony Beckerman from Rancho Dorado. Welcome.
Thank you. You can take a picture of me as well if you want. Hi, thank you, Madam Mayor. Nice to see you all. I know some of you, hi. I'm here on behalf of our community. I'm the president of the HOA for Rancho Dorado. And we've been going through for quite some years speeding problems. And we've addressed the city many, many times, and they have done, I believe, whatever they can at this particular stage. We've asked for speed bumps and more policing, and we understand all the goods and the bads and the uglies. Right at the moment, one of the things that has been offered to us is striping on our streets. Now, this is something that we had a discussion, had a discussion with Jack Griffin, and we've had many discussions. And that's something that the homeowners were really against, because they didn't want it to look like a highway. However, as tier one seems to be the decision that the city has made to stripe the, the streets, one of the things that the homeowners have requested is to limit the amount of yellow double stripes that are, that they're going to be painting. If they have to have them, those yellow stripes just before you get to a monument or a middle island or, or the end of the street, we understand that. But if they can be limited to as short as possible and limiting them to white, if possible, only, so that we don't start looking like a highway. We all know that striping is going to be at the most maybe one or two miles per hour drop. And that's not going to take very long before the drivers see, they'll navigate through that in, in a week. So that's not going to be a really solution. But if the city only has that solution to or for us, then we'll accept that. But if we can try to keep it as limited as possible, the real estate companies and all the people who are in the real estate business classify and nickname us as the gem of San Marcos and the hidden gem of San Marcos. And we'd like to try and keep it that way. We don't want to make it look like a highway or a main road, because many times people come down, they cut through. But a great deal of our speeders, unfortunately, are our own homeowners, so we understand that. But if we can try to make it as little intrusive as possible, we'd really appreciate it, especially on those yellow lines. And I'm speaking on behalf of many of the homeowners at this particular stage.
Okay, well, thank you. And I believe our city manager has been working on this, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we just can't discuss it in an open session.
I understand that completely.
Thank you very much for your.
If something get back to me, that would be a wonderful thing, okay? And I'm ready for the photographs.
And make sure, make sure you leave all your information with us this evening to our city clerk, if you don't mind.
Okay, I will do.
Your contact information.
I'll go over there. Can I go then on to that?
Um.
Or wait?
Yeah, you could just leave it, leave it with them, just so we know how to contact you.
I'll write it in the back and I'll.
Great. Awesome, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to public hearings. Proposed uses of community development block grant funds for program year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Do we have a staff presentation on this?
A very, a very brief staff presentation. As the council knows, we, every year, we go through a process. It's the same exact process every year with respect to community development block grant funds. Those are federal grant funds that come to cities throughout the country. And one of the processes is to have a public hearing and accept any public comment before we actually finalize the plan and submit it to you for approval. So that's where we're at now. We've adopted what's called a consolidated plan. It's a five-year plan. It runs through twenty twenty-four. And so then each of the annual plans within that, within that five-year window have to conform to the consolidated plan in terms of how we use the funds. We use them for a couple of purposes. We tend to use them for handicapped ADA accepts, accept accessibility improvement projects, because we can do that on a citywide basis. We use it for housing assistance. We use it for two-one-one. There's been a variety of those kinds of outreach efforts that we use these funds for. We're recommending the exact same thing this year as we've done in the past. So if there's any comments for the public hearing, then we would take that back, build that into our final plan submittal, which would then come later this year before the end of the fiscal year.
Great, okay. Do we have any public speakers? No, yes.
Do we have a dollar amount, Jack, this year?
We get about seven hundred and, it looks like this year, seven hundred and ten thousand dollars is what we're expecting to get. It's not enough to build together like a larger capital project, because there's time limits on how you have to spend it. So we have to, that's why the ADA improvements at intersections and whatever are good, because we can knock a few of those out each year. And they're, they're pretty short, short duration projects.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a pub, yes.
Just a question, since I'm new. So, so I know that we're going to just identify the potential uses, but after, what's the next step in this process? As far as, does the council have a conversation about how to use those, those funds more specifically?
The council can have that conversation. We would bring, we would bring the final plan back at least thirty days after today. And then that's when, if the council had some suggestions on how it wanted to use the money, that, that we could have those. They are restricted. We can't just use them. The ADA improvements are useful in that they're citywide. Otherwise, they're census tract driven in terms of physical projects where we could do them. So it's not as if it's a, a citywide kind of a funding source.
Okay, great, thank you.
And today's when we get the actual public input, but I don't really see any. But that's when folks could speak up. Okay, this is, yes, councilmember.
Yeah, I have a follow-up question about the timeline. It's not entirely clear to me. So in terms of the input, so if somebody, one of our residents has input or one of our community organizations, if they haven't submitted any input as of today, so it wasn't, it's not clear to me if we could ship for the residents. Does the city staff prepare the report? It gets published? How does that get published? And then is there still the possibility of allowing for comment and further input or?
The city staff prepares the report in accordance with the federal guidelines. We start the process off early in the year. We had an outreach virtual meeting to over forty agencies, because typically the, the folks that ask for these funds tend to be nonprofits and what have you. I think about a dozen attended that. And they give us whatever comments they might have, if any. And then that's when we put the annual plan together to put it out for the public hearing. We notice the public hearing as we're required to do. And then, so if someone, I suppose, after you close the public hearing, wants to provide this information, they can. But we would obviously, the purpose of the public hearing is to get that so that then we can finalize the plan, bring that back to you for your approval.
Thank you for that.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
I'll suck it in.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so are.
That's the only action required.
I'm sorry?
That's the only action required.
Oh, okay. I was just going to say, well, I guess now we can open the public or receive the public input. Okay, and so if folks wanted to, from home, send in public comment or input, they would just send it?
To me immediately.
To you immediately?
Get it to me as fast as you can.
Because you're going to be on the report. Okay. All right, so second oral communications. Do we have any speakers? Oh. Excuse me, ma'am. Are you filling out a speaker slip? We're, we're actually ready for you. I just wanted to let you know. Staff will help you get that up here. No, no, it's okay. It's okay. How about this? We will, we'll go out of order if we, that's okay. Or Michelle could run. That's, that's fine, too. You could have just made it into an airplane and. Just kidding. All right, Nancy Yellen, Rancho Dorado, Homeowners Association. Come on down, if you don't mind. You just walk right in. See, we have the red carpet out for you. Super easy.
Hi, I'm Nancy Yellen.
Hi.
I am a resident, oh, Rebecca.
Yes, hi.
I voted for you.
Well, thank you.
I'm a resident of Rancho Dorado in San Marcos. I'm the original homeowner in our development for twenty-two years. There's been a recent action to do striping within our neighborhood, which a lot of our original owners were, were opposed to. It, it, it is a fine line, because we are an HOA. However, we have Simmons Family Park at the top of our, of our HOA. We also have entrances from San Marcos, from Rancho Santa Fe to Palomar Airport. So where people cut through, where there's excessive traffic and speed coming through. Without devaluing the property of our, of our homes that we've put so much into, we feel like that striping is, is a waste of money and that there could be another solution to slowing down the traffic besides putting these, these lines through our neighborhood. It is spring break. A lot of my, the people that I live in the community that are original owners cannot be here, because they're all on spring break right now. So I'm, I, I'm here. This is me. So we asked that we could postpone it to the next meeting, so we can have more of a voice and more feedback from our, from our community, please.
Okay, so this is not an agendized item today. The, if, if, if you don't mind, I'm going to give this, I'm going to get the, the speaker slip back to our city clerk. And if you could leave your contact information, our city manager can reach back out to you. But this was also a, an action that was taken at the Traffic Safety Commission last year. I want to say it was maybe October. But I'm not entirely positive about the month. But anyway, and then we can get back to you and let you know what's, you know, our city manager can talk to you about what's going on.
So I'm sorry, I didn't know the proper channels to do this.
No, you know what? If you don't know. No, and you know what? We're happy that you're here.
Thank you.
So I'm just trying to explain kind of how that works. So.
Okay, absolutely.
So if you could just leave your information with them, that would be fabulous. And then that way, we can get back in contact with you.
They've already started putting stuff on our street, so I don't, because.
Yeah, so.
I've stowed them away already.
Our, our city manager is our, basically, our CEO of the city.
Okay.
So he, he actually will be able to reach back out to you and.
So how, how do I get in contact with him?
So if you go in the back, just leave your information, and we will make sure that they, that he reaches out to you.
Okay, and then they'll maybe on the agenda for next meeting? Is that how it works?
Well, that's, I, I don't think it will be on the agenda for the next meeting. But he'll be able to talk to you. Like we're, like, it's, it's hard to explain, but being that this is not something that's on the agenda, we can't really say too much. But if you could just, he could explain the process to you, I think, when he calls you.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming.
Mayor?
Yes, yes.
City manager, a quick question. Jack, I had received an email from another resident earlier today that there'd been some communication between he and the, and the city regarding maybe a phased approach to the, to the striping. And do you have any updates on that by chance?
Not, not at this time, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right, let's see. Reports, Sandag. Last Friday, we actually met. We talked about the audit, our outside independent, our independent auditor is actually retiring for AB eight oh five. And what she's going to do is she's going to be leaving the agency. She was originally going to leave, I think, in June. And then she's postponed that to the fall. And so what we've done is we're moving forward with the process of recruiting a new independent auditor, which is super important to the work at Sandag, being that they have a billion-dollar-a-year budget. All of San Diego County pays transnet monies for the road improvements and transit improvements, as well as the state of California and then federal dollars. Everything is funneled through Sandag. So it's really important to have an outside independent auditor watching those dollars. And then the other thing that we did is we actually talked about, and this was closed session, so I can't really report too much. But we did talk about the performance evaluation for our director, Hassan Akrata. And then May eighteenth is Bike to Work Day. Do I have that date right? I think it's May eighteenth. And that's bike, it's actually not Bike to Work Day any longer. It's Bike Anywhere, which I don't know why they're doing that. But anyway, I usually hop on my bike and come to City Hall. Are we going to have, do we know if we're going to have a pit stop here?
Yes, six o'clock, correct time.
Well, you know.
I'll be here.
Well, you better be riding your bike, because last time, one of our councilmembers. showed up in a car. Not me, but anyway, so yeah, a lot of fun, you know, riding your bike if you so have one. So anything else that I missed? I think you were there, too.
No, just, yes. One of the collateral duties I have is to represent our community on the Public Safety Committee. And right now, Argus is a big thing for the general public. It may not mean anything to you, but for the deputies in the background, it's a huge tool for them to share information and obtain information when they're doing their work. We're going through a process, which the city manager is actively involved in, for how we as a city are billed. So I'm having current discussions with the new director of Argus, who's our, one of our former sheriffs, about ensuring that we are paying for the services that generate out of our city, so that we're not paying somebody else's freight. And it's a big thing. And it may only be nickels and dimes here and there, but the nickels and dimes add up. So we need to make sure that our residents, through our processes, are only paying for the services we get in San Marcos.
And I think that's specifically because we have a lot of unincorporated areas outside the city.
Yep.
Even Lake San Marcos, believe it or not, is a donut hole right in the middle of San Marcos.
All right, so very, very briefly, and I will be very brief. One of our lieutenants up here tonight is from Valley Center Command, and we have Lake San Marcos, which are unincorporated. But you may have services that are provided with crime analysis, detective follow-up to generate from our contract with city deputies. So any interaction into the database that we're discussing, the Argus system, we need to make sure everybody is billed fairly, whether it's city or county.
Okay. All right, moving on to League of California Cities, Councilmember Musgrove.
Yes, we had the legislative update, which I briefed on at the last council meeting. Then we had, two days later, after the council meeting, we had a presentation with a slide deck, which I provided to the city clerk, and it should be going out to all the council members to look at all the different items that affect us on, on the current legislative platform up in Sacramento. And then we meet again in person on April 10th.
Okay. North County Transit, Deputy Mayor.
We met on March 16th. Couple takeaways from that. We had Employee Appreciation Day on the 17th, and we, North County Transit has 732 direct employees, as well as contractor employees, so we recognize them. We are starting to restore some bus service due to some service interruptions that have happened since COVID and as well as due to lack of bus drivers. So we're starting to phase back in some of those. There are several routes. The Escondido, the Breeze Route 350 that goes through Escondido will be restored to every 20 minutes on April 2nd. And then the 302 and the 303 will be restored in October. And then the remaining routes hopefully will be restored in April of '24. So we're getting there. It's a slow process in transit, in many ways. And then we also discussed our 24 strategic areas. And we have a five-year plan to advance those areas. And let me tell you what those areas are. The four key areas identified are operational excellence, organizational excellence, community connection, and customer experience. And so staff will be working on different changes to different parts of the organization, and those will be coming forward, the operating and the capital budget will be coming forward to the full board in June of this year. So trying to make the experience better, so there'll be more ridership.
Okay, sounds good. North County Dispatch Joint Powers Authority, Councilmember Nunez.
No, no update at this time. Our next meeting is going to be in May.
Okay. Clean Energy Alliance, Councilmember Musgrove.
Thank you, Mayor. Since we last met, we have had our CEO from the Clean Energy Alliance appear before our planning commission, give them a presentation on the program itself. We had a presentation at San Marcos Elementary School, an evening event for those residents that can make it but can't normally make it to a daytime event. We are meeting at One Safe Place, 1050 Los Felicitos, and that's being sponsored by the Kiwanis of San Marcos. That's on the 4th, so next week. And that will be from 11:30 to 1:30. And then we have an in-person meeting this Thursday in Oceanside.
Are they doing one at the Boys and Girls Club? It seems like that would be a really good location, too.
I could make that suggestion.
Okay, perfect. Excellent. Thank you. Also, if there could be an interpreter, too. There was one at San Marcos Elementary the other night, correct?
Absolutely. We always have an interpreter present in all the meetings.
Perfect.
And if you're interested, and we finish in time, our CEO is at the street or the farmer's market.
Right now?
Yeah, from 3 to 7 today. She has a booth set up to answer questions.
Only have 30 minutes, so.
Have 30 minutes.
Better run.
We'll be very brief.
Okay. City Council Business Visits. Councilmember Nunez and Musgrove.
No.
No.
Sinella.
Oh, that's right.
So Councilwoman Nunez and I met with Brazilian exotic granite yesterday, and the two owners, Patrick and Mardo. It was, it was not only an interesting and informative kind of meet and greet with them, but it was actually a lot of fun and very impressive with what they're doing there with their exotic stone, if you will. 95% of their, of their slabs that you see here on the photo are from Brazil, and then the remaining 5% are mostly from Italy and Spain. And as you can see, these are not the types of slabs that you might find like at Lowe's or Home Depot. They're, they're very unique and high quality. They get customers from all over the country. A lot of, most of them, of course, are locally, but they also get, they've had customers from Miami and Vegas and other places like that. They've been in business since 2005. They continue to grow relatively quickly. They're going to be coming before us in the future for some new plans, some expansion plans and a new building that they're working, it sounds like with La Sardi on. And so that's good to see them being successful. They've, they employ 18 employees. About five or six of them actually live here in San Marcos. The rest of them either live in North County, and I think there's a couple in San Diego as well. And, and then both Patrick and Mardo live here in San Marcos as well, in Santa Leo Hills. So it's good to have a local, they're not brothers, although they look like they could be, but they're lifelong friends who grew up and met in Brazil and then ended up moving here to the States. And it's good to see that they're successful. I don't know, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I know. I, I agree. It was another, one of those exciting visits. I've driven by there so many times, had no idea, right, what was behind. And I honestly thought like, oh, this is not going to be that exciting, but it really is. It's almost like seeing works of art in these giants' labs. It's really impressive. And, and then once again, it was so interesting to, to see their, their deep connections to our city and how grateful they are to be here and to have raised families here. And then also interesting to, to hear how a lot of their customers are, are here in the city, and they've helped to, to create some of that. And also I did have in our notes that they have a location in Miramar, right? And the other thing they mentioned is when they first started, they had two locations, right, in San Marcos, their current location, then, then over by in Rancheros.
Yep.
So it was very difficult for them, cumbersome for their customers to be back and forth. So they're definitely looking forward to the expansion. And so really, really interested, and they were just so happy that, very happy with the city, and they're looking forward to their expansion.
I've bought from them twice. I thought they were great. And, and the beautiful thing, a lot of people don't know, is like they'll move all of the slabs so that you can compare them when you're putting a countertop in to make sure that they match up nice. I mean, it really, it really is, they have really good customer service, I thought. I was very happy with them. Yeah.
Yeah, you could see that they're very hands-on, and in fact, I think it seems like they spent quite a bit of time on location, right, and at their sources in Brazil and Italy and, and Spain, right, making sure that they bring in the, the best materials.
Okay. San Marcos Creek Project, Jack Griffin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We don't really have much of a report. Not much has changed over the last couple of weeks.
Because of all that rain.
Yeah, we just need dry. But we're, hope, fingers crossed, scheduled to do the pour of the Via Veracruz Bridge Deck on two separate pours now. We're breaking it in half in early to mid-April. So that's where we're at. Otherwise, there's no change from last time.
Okay. All right, council commentary. 78th closed westbound right now. It's a real pain for anyone that's going that way. I did see on the social media for Caltrans today, because it's not our project, it's a Caltrans project, that they were taking out the corrugated metal pipe, which we actually did in our city a few years ago. We had a lot of it. We had a big project. But I did see that they're now putting in concrete culverts, which is good to see, underneath the freeway. I don't know why there was metal for such a long time. But anyway, that remains to be seen when that will actually be opened back up. Once they do that, they, they estimated about seven to 10 days, and by the way, they're working 24 hours a day, seven days a week right now. And the second part will be the eastbound lanes, and they'll be closing that down. So just make sure you always go to Caltrans, just, I think it's, is it District 11? I think it's District 11. And then you would be able to find all the latest updates on social media, or you can go to their website, Caltrans District 11. But it's really important to try to plan and schedule when you're going that way, because it does make a big difference, especially during high traffic times. Any other council commentary? Yes, Councilmember Nunez and then Deputy Mayor, sorry.
And I want to remind our residents that this Saturday is our city monthly hike, this Saturday, April the 1st. For those residents that are not aware, we have a monthly hike the first Saturday of the month, and it's led by our staff and volunteer rangers. So we're scheduled for this Saturday, and we're hiking from the Las Posas Park to P Mountain behind Palomar College. So everybody's invited to participate. The hike is from 9:00 AM to noon, and signups start at 8:30 in the morning. So just want to remind everybody that that's available for our residents.
All right, thanks. Make sure you bring water.
Lots of water and snacks and.
Yes.
And hiking shoes.
So I, I just want to comment. So we've had unbelievable amount of bad weather recently, and as we can see, Caltrans is dealing with the 78. We're delayed on our new bridge and all that. But I just want to take a moment and express, I think, appreciation from all of us for what our staff has been going through, dealing with all of this weather and public works, parks and rec, along with everybody, trying to make sure everybody is able to get around how they need to and, and do the things they need to. It's been a difficult time, and, and I think everybody's worked very diligently to try to make the right decisions. So just want to say thank you to staff for, for doing what you do.
Yes, and our sheriff deputies, I actually saw one moving.
Sheriff's.
A sandbag out of the way, so that the drain could drain in the middle of San Marcos Boulevard. And it was, it was up like halfway up the shins, too, so, yeah. Any other commentary? Okay, we thought this meeting is adjourned. 37, 37 minutes.
Yeah, Sunday. What's going on Sunday?
Oh, I did. Well, I'm gonna, I'll probably.